Thank you, Father, for drawing us here today. I pray that you would guide our words, thoughts, and deeds in Jesus' name. Good afternoon, everyone. Mel, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mason, Commissioner Maves.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Van Austin.
Here.
Commissioner Hankins.
Here.
Commissioner Aaron's. Commissioner Levanway.
Here.
Commissioner Chamberlain.
Here.
All right. Would anyone like to add or remove any agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on, and I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Aaron's. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Seconded by Mr. Maves. Can we have a roll call there, please?
Commissioner Turnbull?
No.
Commissioner Hankins?
No.
Commissioner Levanway?
Yes.
Commissioner Mason? Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Austin?
Yes.
Commissioner Maves?
No.
Commissioner Chamberlain?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay. So we have, uh... Next on our agenda is public comment. And we can then move to our new business. We'll probably need to make a motion to, um... To allow our attorney to discuss this in open meeting. But ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like to address the board, this is our public comment section. You'll have three minutes to address the board. I would ask you to step to the podium, state your name and where you reside. You'll have three minutes to speak. I'll give you a courtesy notice at 30 seconds. Christie, have a list for me? Thank you. First up on my list, I have John Swartout. John, let me get set up with my timer here. Make sure your mic is on. I'll say if you would, please. No, I don't think it is.
Yep, it is. John Swartout, Emmett County. "Mr. Chairman, this morning I reviewed the video of the famous six- or seven-hour health board meeting of September 7th, 2021, wherein the board members, of which you are the only one still serving, discovered that the board had no authority whatsoever over the lawful decisions and emergency orders of its health officer. Specifically, the board could not rescind the school mask order issued August 27th, 2021 by Lisa Peacock. She issued that order pursuant to the same Michigan Health Code Section 333.2453 you are discussing today, which says, among other things, 'Emergency procedures are not limited to this code.' In fact, the statute doesn't define key terms, doesn't have any time restriction, and, in Judge Hunter's words, 'did not even require that the measures ordered by the director need to be rationally related to controlling the epidemic.' It's a bad law. It's overly broad. It's a key part of the law that rendered the health board impotent to reign in the authoritarian excesses of its own health officer in the fall of 2021. You may have the utmost confidence in the judgment of your health officer, but why would you put up a legal fight to maintain his or her autonomous authority to upend the Constitution without any recourse?"
Thank you. Would anyone else like to...? I'm sorry, I'll go down the list here first. Randy Bishop.
Randy Bishop, Antrim County. "In reviewing the agenda for today, I refer to the potential for closed session. Under the Open Meetings Act 15.268, the Public Act 267 of 1976, the agenda, Mr. Chairman, points to subsection H. If you refer to the copies of the Open Meetings Act that I provided the commissioners, if you read that, it says to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. Now, that particular reference to justify going into closed session usually is told to me by elected officials, it's attorney-client privilege. If we're going to discuss something under attorney-client privilege, that's not what H says. It does not state and have anything to do with attorney-client privilege unless you can state specifically the state statute or the federal statute under which you will be discussing something in closed session that should not be disclosed to the public. And I believe based on your agenda today that you're basically operating in violation, blatant violation of the Open Meetings Act if you decide to go into closed session to discuss this case. The plaintiff, Mr. Murphy of the Iron Pig, is not seeking financial compensation damages at this point from the way I read the lawsuit, and therefore, there's nothing to negotiate or to settle with him. So the public would like to know what you're talking about, what you're asking the attorney, what his advice to you is, and we believe it should be made public record. Thank you."
Brett Gooding.
Good afternoon. Brett Gooding, Emmett County. "I've got a couple of questions or issues that I just don't understand what's going on. I don't really understand why you would go to appeal this court decision. I think you're wasting money. I have talked to many people since COVID. I ran a business in COVID. I can't find one person that said shutting down their businesses was good for them. Not one. I just don't think that you should be getting involved in things at the state level. You not only voted for it, you seconded the motion. I think that you're trying to keep control unconstitutionally, and I think it's wrong. Thank you."
David Delaney.
Well, this three minutes is going to be a challenge. No, I'll stay within the three minutes. My name is David Delaney. I'm counsel for the Iron Pig. For the last four years, I've litigated probably 15 of these constitutional cases throughout the state of Michigan. I had multiple cases in the Court of Appeals, and I have three cases pending in the Michigan Supreme Court. One of the most difficult things about this area is trying to get people to understand what it is because it has complexities to it, and it's as simple as this: James Madison, unlike the king, divided the powers of government into three branches. You are the legislative branch from your districts. You write the laws. The executive branch, this gentleman here, is in the executive branch, Mr. Hackens. He enforces the law. And the judicial branch, like Judge Hunter, he interprets the law. Michigan has one of the most strictest separation of powers in the country in the Michigan Constitution, and you cannot cross those powers. So what happened here was the executive branch, which is the Health Department, you're still legislative. That branch wrote a law. Those are orders. They closed businesses. They mask mandated. They ordered various things. That cannot happen under the separation of powers. Starting in 2020, the Michigan Supreme Court took those powers from the governor because she's in the executive branch, not because she's a Democrat or a Republican, because she's in the executive branch. In 2022, Judge Hunter took those powers from the state Health Department because they are in the executive branch. They do not write laws. And then again, in 2024, recently, Judge Hunter took those powers again. It's as simple as that. You write laws, you enforce laws, and you interpret laws, and that is the reason your health department cannot write laws. Thank you."
Gary... Is it Gary Bart? Thank you, sir. Uh... Carla Bart. Thank you. Ian Murphy.
Uh... Ian Murphy on Seago County. "I've been here a couple of times before. Thank you for giving me just a couple of minutes. I don't have any prepared remarks other than I just want to say this, that from the beginning, this was never about a fight against our government. It wasn't anything crazy like that, and it's not a fight against our health department, who I actually adore and think does a wonderful job. I'm on the record as saying Holly Brinley is probably one of the best local health officers I've ever had to deal with in my 20-plus years of being in the food service business. She's a wonderful health officer. Now, having said all that, really what this is about is the abuse of power, the overreach. What my attorney said just a few moments ago is really what it's about. We've got to remove the emotion of everything, of the masks and everything about COVID, and look at exactly the power that the Health Department at the state level and at the local level also has. The other thing I want to say is, in no way do I want to be a hindrance to the Health Board and the Health Department's ability to curb a public pandemic, whatever that happens to look like. And that is part of the problem, is that we have to look at these things, and we have to narrow them down and figure out exactly... And unfortunately, the last four years, we have seen in not just the Health Department of Northwest Michigan, but all over the state, health departments have tackled this pandemic differently. We cited a case out of East Lansing in which they went around to sororities and fraternities that had known COVID cases on them. So I could, as an adult, make a decision to go into that fraternity sorority, or in this case, maybe my restaurant, had it ever actually had a case of COVID, you guys. I have to say that on the record again. We have never had a case of COVID in my restaurant. For four years, not even a contact tracing. I've asked for public records. There are none. It would be one thing if we had an outbreak with my employees, if there was a ton of contact tracing, but it's important to remember, none of that happened. It's nowhere on the record. The State Health Department had to admit that, excuse me, on the record as such. So they were coming after me for nothing other than noncompliance, and this is what this is about. Taking that power and exerting it on somebody that's simply noncompliant. Thank you, guys."
There are no other public names that want to address the board. Would anyone else like to address the Board of Health? Hearing none, we will close public comment. That moves us to new business. Would anyone like to make a motion to allow, and we will have a roll call vote to reflect this, but would anyone like to make a motion to allow our attorney, Mr. Cross, to discuss his letter with us in the public forum? No, this is... What I'm looking for is a motion to, uh... To allow Mr. Cross, for us to waive our attorney-client privilege, to allow Mr. Cross to discuss his written opinion in the public meeting. Okay. Been moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Can we just restate the motion for Melanie so she can record it?
Mr. Mason.
I think also probably what's needed in there is to waive attorney-client privilege, I believe.
To discuss his written opinion, is that correct? Okay. Melanie, are you good?
Yep.
Okay. Are you...
Thank you.
Mr. Turnbull, are you happy with that friendly amendment? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Mel, can we have a roll call, please? Now, I should point out, I believe... Well, maybe I shouldn't point it out. Maybe I need to talk to my lawyer first. I think in order for us to move forward to waive the attorney-client privilege, I believe it would have to be unanimous because each of us has that attorney-client privilege, and, uh... For example, Mr. Mason can't waive it for me. Is that correctly stated, Mr. Cross?
Speaking as a body, I would be happy to, because it belongs to the body, the Board of Health, not the one person.
Okay. I'm still going to ask for a roll call, man. Okay. Melanie, if you would, please.
Commissioner Hankins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mason? Commissioner Chamberlain?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Austin?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Maves?
Yes.
Commissioner Levanway?
I must say no.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Matt Cross. He is our civil counsel. Good afternoon, sir. You don't have three minutes. Take as long as you like.
Well, I'm going to try not to take three minutes even because it's important to point out, I'm not here to relitigate what Judge Hunter already ruled on, right? I'm here to tell you guys what he said. It's really just get input from you as to where it goes from here because it's...
Hold on. Hold on one second. We want to make sure the microphone's on for you.
Put it mute, then back up.
Something.
There you go.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. All right. I'm going to do my best here. If I'm being quiet again, I guess you guys could just shut me down. So again, I'm not here to relitigate what we talked about in the case. I mean, this was 40-plus pages of briefing. This was, I don't know, hour-plus of oral argument. I mean, these issues with respect to Mr. Delaney are far more complicated than even he lets on in his presentation because Judge Hunter didn't agree that it's quite as simple as legislative. All you can do is write laws, executive. All you can do is execute them. The reality is far messier than democracies. The question is whether the local health officer was given an intelligible principle, something to guide his decision-making, and Judge Hunter simply said no. So, um, you know, I will say that, uh, in my experience looking, because obviously Michigan's no outlier. I mean, during COVID, every state was taking very similar measures prohibiting in-person gatherings and the like, and nearly all of the other states that I sampled came to the conclusion that these types of delegations are not unconstitutional. So again, not going to go any deeper than that, but there's... I only say that to say there are still arguments to be made that this delegation should be upheld, but, um, I have no interest. I'm not running for office. I'm not a politician. I don't care about the politics behind it. I'm just here to get from you, uh, input whether you want to continue this fight at the next level. So... And unfortunately, the reality is there's no clear good answer here. Um, so I mean, if you like the outcome... I mean, right now, we have the Atsigo County Circuit Court saying that this is unconstitutional. No doubt it's binding on this health department, no matter where it operates. It's not limited to Atsigo County. So this health department can no longer rely on Section 2453. There's no question about that, but that's not to say that someone in Metro Detroit could rely on it. So right now, it's not the law of the land. It's the law in Atsigo County and with respect to the, uh, this health department. So if you like the outcome, maybe you want to see the Court of Appeals affirm it and make it the law of the land, so it applies to everyone. Of course, there's some risks to that because the Court of Appeals could very well overturn what the, uh, the trial court did. So, uh, and the exact opposite is true. If you don't like the ruling, I mean, maybe you want to appeal it and see if the Court of Appeals reverses, and, uh, you know, maybe the affirm it, and that ruling you don't like is now binding on the entire state. So I really don't have much more than that. If you guys want me to get deeper into the details, I'm happy to. I can just tell you, it's a very... This non-delegation doctrine is a very petty topic that is, um... There's a smattering of case law in Michigan, but it's not a, um, a very robust doctrine for us to have briefed. But, uh, it does get a bit complicated, but that's... That's really all I have. I mean, if you guys have questions, happy to answer them, but ultimately, what I need from you is just a yes or no on the appeal because the window closes on May 23rd. So we need a decision by then, or the decision is sort of made by default, and we're left with this order.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cross. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Cross? Everybody, I'm assuming, did get a written or a copy of his written, uh, decision. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Sir? Mr. Mason, can you move toward your mic, please? Thank you.
Well... I'd like to say that most of the legwork is already done. There's really... We're not going to be reinventing the wheel in the Court of Appeals in the Michigan Supreme Court. I mean, we're kind of stuck with the arguments we made in the trial court. So a lot of that briefing is done. We may refine some arguments here and there, but, um, if I had to put a dollar value on it, I mean... Somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe 5,000 to 10,000, uh, to include oral argument at the Court of Appeals level. I don't know, maybe tack on another five to 10 if we go to the Michigan Supreme Court, but, um... Those are very, very loose estimates. I mean, I really think that most of the work has already been done. Um, so... Yeah, that would... I mean, that would be... I could... Because some of these things are sort of out of our hands, you know, but, uh... 10,000 should be enough, but I don't want to run into a situation in which, you know, we've done the briefing, and for some reason, it took much longer than we expected it to, and now we have to go to oral argument, but we're right at that 10,000 mark. So what do we do then, you know? So I...
So we just would want money, so 7,000 dollars.
Oh, of course.
So we went something 10, 15,000 in dollars that worked out, but not overexpend beyond that one month.
I think if you gave me up to 15, I think that's... I'd like to think that's something that I could stay under. Yeah.
I have a follow-up question to that, man. How much have we spent to date? That's a better question for Dan. Okay, I wasn't sure if it was for you or for Dave.
Yeah, I don't, um... I don't have the exact amount, but it's somewhere between 15 and 20.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
I'll just say, Chairman, that kind of reinforces the fact that 15 is almost certainly going to be enough to get us through the... To the finish line in the appellate coils.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cross. Does anyone else from the board have... Mr. Chamberlain, go ahead.
Mr. Cross, how much was it to file the appeal?
That's a... So I have to rely upon my... I have an appellate department at my firm. They handle these things. Um, just because of the time crunch, they've already put together the claim of appeals, a two-page document. It's very simple. I got the transcript immediately after the hearing, so we already have that because I sort of, um... You know, I don't want to say that I knew what the conclusion was going to be, but I wanted to be prepared for this adverse outcome. So everything's already done. The exact filing fee, I couldn't tell you. I'm not really sure.
Okay.
But it would be nominal, like 200, maybe.
Yeah, we were told around 200 bucks or something. All right. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question for Mr. Cross?
Could you? Yeah. Mr. Chair, could you elaborate on... On the section or on the second page of your comments to us? You know, what were you thinking? It says, "We currently have until May 24th, 2024, to file a claim of appeal in Michigan Court of Appeals. We wish to do so, but there are a few things to consider." What are those considerations?
Just what I've already mentioned. And by the way, just to clarify, I had an argument with my appellate director over this. It's the 23rd, not the 24th. Apparently, I was calculating my days wrong, but at any rate, the decision is really based on what I, you know, what I just talked about. I mean, there are positive and negative implications for either side, depending on how you feel about the outcome. Um, you know, you could either look at it, uh, this being the law of the land is a good thing or a bad thing, and, um... So it's really just those considerations that I mentioned before.
Okay. So, and then after that, it says, "First, we would hope that the Michigan Attorney General's Office would step in on appeal and assist, alleviating the financial burden on us. Uh, now that you and I have several conversations speaking of Dan, um, uh... Uh, we've had several conversations with the Attorney General's Office. It seems clear they have no intention of doing so. So in other words, if we do this, we're on our own. We can't expect any help from the state, correct?"
Right. They could certainly change their mind, but at this point, that seems to be what the situation's going to be.
So what would be the outcome if we denied the motion to appeal?
Well, then this order just stands. I mean, it's, again, limited to Atsigo County, limited to this health department, and other courts are free to come to different conclusions on the constitutionality of Section 2453. Um, I could tell you one other thing, and I don't want to take this too far down a rabbit hole, but my, uh, concern is if we walk into a situation in which the TNV and Associates decision, which I didn't go into in the letter because I don't want to relitigate the merits of the, uh, of the case, but that was a really large part of Judge Hunter's, uh, holding, is it was a Court of Appeals opinion that invalidated Section 2253 that has nearly identical language to Section 2453, and that is still pending in front of the Michigan Supreme Court. So it's... I believe David might know better than I, but I think the briefs were finally submitted at the end of last year. I don't believe oral argument has been set yet, but there's still a possibility that TNV gets overturned by the Michigan Supreme Court. They uphold the constitutionality of 2253. That kind of undermines the basis for Judge Hunter's inclusion here. So, uh, then I'll kind of just be left with this, you know. I don't know where to go from there. I don't know if we have to take some sort of affirmative action to have, uh, Judge Hunter clarify that the overturning of TNV does impact and basically negate his ruling. So that's a possibility, uh, but, uh, I don't know if that's going to happen. It's... We just have to wait and see how that case comes down. But otherwise, yeah, that's it. If we don't appeal, we're just... This is the decision, and this is the law of, uh, Atsigo County and the law that's binding on this, on this Board of Health and this health department.
That's all I have, sir.
Yeah, but briefs have been submitted. They're just waiting for oral argument to be submitted.
Anybody else from the Board of Health have any questions for Mr. Cross?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I'd like to ask, um, I don't know if it was already mentioned. I apologize. You just tell me. Shut up. But, um, a timeline, how long would a thing, if we send it to the Circuit Court of Appeals? How long are we looking at? Is this something that takes weeks, days, months, years, decades?
Not decades, months. Yeah, hopefully. Hopefully. That would be something. Months, certainly, at a minimum. You may be... And TV, TNV might actually be around the one-year mark since it's been appealed. So I mean, it could get into that, but I mean, until we get something saying otherwise, um, I mean, that order is still binding on this, uh, this health department. But yeah, it'd be months potentially creeping into a year. I'd be surprised if it was more than one year. I don't understand the question. He wants to go higher.
If we make a motion and lose the path, what's the defense towards the field file? But if he decides, we now Thursday, we could say, "Thanks." We don't have a contract, or do we still have that same contract that we can, um, that 15,000?
Well, uh, I was following you up until the reference to a contract, so obviously, as you do have a contract with me. I mean, I am your civil counsel, so it's... If you wanted to put a limit on what I could do on this particular project, I would say, yeah, I would still live by that. Um, uh, are you envisioning a scenario in which you're saying you don't pass such a motion today to cap it, and... Yeah. Now, if I'm following your scenario correctly, I mean, if you deny that motion, if that motion doesn't get seconded or doesn't pass today, but Ian decides that he's going to appeal, I think I would then have the time to come back to you again and say, "Hey, this has changed. Mr. Murphy has appealed. We really should do something to defend it." Or, I mean, there is... You don't have to defend it, uh, but as I mentioned in the letter, I mean, there is some concern I have at that point where, um, again, this would be more of a question for my appellate department, but they have indicated that there could be some penalty for basically what would amount to a default in the appeals level for not defending against the appeal. So, uh, there could be a scenario in which we're assessed costs and attorney's fees if we don't do anything. So, um... So I think that answers your question, but I mean, if he appeals and you say not to appeal today, I would then likely want to come back to this body and make sure you knew that, hey, he has appealed. Do you still want me to just do nothing? So, um... That could happen.
Any other questions for Mr. Cross from the board? Apparently not. Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Um, when is it you need, I know that you have another meeting that you need to attend. When is it you need to leave?
You probably know better than I do. How far of a drive is East Georgia?
It's a, but give, give yourself 20 minutes to get there.
Well, I can stick around until five or so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, board. As Mr. Wallace from Shboygan County often says, what's your pleasure? I'm going to render my two cents. You guys take it for what it's worth. We have had several lawsuits that have addressed, that have been addressed to this board and this health department in the past few years. We have a judge's decision. Some are going to like it, some are going to hate it. But we have a judge's determination. And in the back of my mind, I don't want to spend any more money from our four counties to defend what should be defended, in my not-so-humble opinion, by the Michigan Attorney General's Office. This is a Michigan public health code. And I believe if the state wants to pick this up, they certainly have every right to do so. But I don't believe that our constituents in Atsigo, Antrim, Charlevois, and Emmett Counties should be continually bled dry. The only people who win in this deal are the attorneys. Nothing personal, Matt, but that's who wins. So I'm not in favor of pursuing the appeal. And I know that just cost me some votes in Charlevois County. But the sheriff gave me a great piece of advice about four years ago. He said, go in and vote your conscience and sleep well at night. That's my thoughts. Sir.
Thanks, Adam. I have been on tour. I've got some. And I brought this upon off of this case, that we've dealt with everyone. Overwhelmingly. People don't want.
Okay. Thank you.
I share. So I took a lot of nice heat for supporting the motion. Biggest thing is I want to respect Matt Cross's decision. I listened to him. I supported it because it was around 200 bucks to file. Wait until the next meeting. Instead, it failed. We're at the special meeting, which now is actually costing us more. It's probably around, what? Say 500 bucks health department, then you count our pay, that's 900 bucks. So I felt it was smarter to say yes. Give us the time to get this report, hear from Matt Cross, and then vote on it. So I want to share my opinion. Okay?
Mr. Chair, I'll do what he just said. That's, that's the reason why, in the interest of saving money, I've, I voted and seconded last time to let, to exactly what was talked about, you know, to, so we could have time. You know, it just, the decision come down the day before, you know, it seemed like a prudent thing to do rather than call another meeting. You know, it, I don't like wasting money either. You know? And towards that end, I'll make the motion to not move forward to appeal.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Move in a second. Any further discussion? Anybody else want to weigh in?
I just want to make sure I'm clear on that motion. That was a motion to not appeal.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Want to discuss this?
Mr. Chair.
Cutting anybody off? Mr. Turnbull, go ahead.
I just guess everybody got away in a little bit. Um, I've been, really, this has been weighing very heavy on my heart. Recently, we've got something coming up, that being Memorial Day over this next couple of, I mean, over this next weekend. And I did want to say, Judge Hunter's ruling and Mr. Cross, man, correct me if I'm wrong, but he deemed that the statute number, number, I'm sorry, I don't remember the numbers. Like I would have written it down, but I couldn't read it anyway. Um, you guys can laugh at that. But, um, was that it was unconstitutional. And that's, that causes me great distress. Uh, I, I might be the only person in this room that has not only fought, but died in defense of the freedom for this country. Um, I mean, I say that lightly. You guys know my, most people here know my story. Uh, but in the explosion that took my eyesight and, um, which I did end up dying three times from. Don't worry, I got better. Um, you can laugh at that too, if you want. But it took the lives of four Americans. Um, and I've been sitting here and as I was taking notes, I actually wrote their names down because it's, you know, we got to keep them alive in our hearts and in our minds. And those four Americans fought as service members, and their oath was to support and defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic, to bear true faith and allegiance to the same. So when I voted, the last time we voted on this, I was a no vote because I wanted to make sure that I am, as a patriot, as somebody who has fought to protect our Constitution, I don't want there to be, I don't want, you know, I just don't want there to be any perceptions from my loved ones, from the families of the fallen, from them looking down from above, not that I could be doing, taking action against our Constitution. So I say this, I mean, this is a very emotional thing and bear with me and my, you know, I hate making decisions based on a motion because um, we all know what happens then. But logically, talking about the amount of money that it takes to go into this, um, I mean, initially it was just a couple hundred dollars and now it's, it's moved into, you know, ballpark of tens of thousands of dollars, ten, fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, so being fiscally responsible, just as you said, Mr. Chairman, that's kind of the way I'm weighing on, um. And so that, that's why I will, I give my answer the way it is. But that's, those, those are my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turnbull.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just, I just wanted to weigh in just a little bit. I just, other than just ask a question. Um, you know, great minds think alike. You practically mirrored exactly what I've been thinking for the, the last few days since our last meeting, but since the last meeting, the only recurring word that's ever entered my mind was unconstitutional in regards to this issue. And that's where I stand.
Thank you, Mr. Mapes. Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. The motion, I'm going to try and restate it or paraphrase it, but the motion is to not pursue the appeal and to accept the judge's decision in this matter. Is that a correct restate?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Thrill.
I was just going to say, before, before you guys vote, I just wanted to say something too. I just oddly, you know, I mean, the public health code has been something that has been law since 1978, and I just feel like I should make, make some statements about it since I am the health officer here. Um, you know, I just want to say that, you know, wearing my public health hat, if there's an outbreak, you know, I want to react quickly and swiftly to mitigate that outbreak. And 2453 was one of those tools to do that. That being said, you know, wearing my citizen hat, I totally get the constitutional problem, you know, that was pointed out by Judge, Judge Hunter. Um, you know, if the law lacks standards, I think he, you know, basically said that the other statute that was in question, 2451, had those standards embedded in the law. So 2453 does not. And if that is the case, I think the legislature should fix that. I think the legislature, legislature should look at that, um, define epidemic, put standards in place. So we do have that tool, but also has, um, due process. And it passes constitutional muster because, you know, I'm a student of history too. I appreciate the Constitution. I uphold the Constitution. You all do. And, you know, I respect Judge Hunter's decision. I mean, we follow the laws. If this, if this is the law of the land, then, then we follow it, right? But I think it's the legislature's job to take action in situations like this. They have broad-reaching effects.
Statewide effects.
Well, currently, right now, just four counties, but yeah, potentially statewide effects.
Well, but I'm in agreement with you. The legislature needs to address the Michigan Public Health Code, which may not be popular in a reelection year, but 2020 caught everybody off guard, including the legislature, because it's not a problem until it's a problem, right?
Right.
So here we are at a problem. All right. Thank you, Dan.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to call a question. We have a motion in a second. Mal, can we have a roll call, please? Wait, let, before we do that, because we've wandered a little bit. An affirmative vote, a yes vote, is to not pursue the appeal. A no vote would be to pursue the appeal. I just want everybody to be clear in that. Okay? Mal, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Chamberlain?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavanway?
Yes.
Commissioner Mapes?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Austin?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Hankins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mason? Motion passed.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, on our agenda, that moves us to public comment once again. Again, you'll have three minutes to address the board. I will, would ask you to step to the podium, state your name. I'll start the timer. I'll give you a 30-second warning. Uh, when you have 30 seconds left, that is. So would anyone like to address the Board of Appellate? Sir?
I just wanted to come today and be able to see and hear these proceedings so that way I could take it in for myself. And first I want to say, Jonathan, uh, thank you for your service, and you are not the only person in this room who has fought and died for this country. So I share that sacrifice with you, and I want to thank you for your service. And I, uh, hope that through this Memorial Day that you and your family are able to remember those of your brothers and sisters who weren't able to come home with us. And I would also like to address this board and tell you all, I am extremely proud as an American to watch that you have seen the wrong that has been done and you have chose not to continue to pursue it. And that is something that we need more of in this society, because I think it's important for all of us who are in the position to make decisions on behalf of others to, um, think, are, would we be willing to accept the consequences that we are trying to bring on somebody else for violating their rights if that is what the court finds? And I think if we were to approach these situations like that, and as it appears that this board has done, then I think that we would get a truly better quality of government. So I'm happy to see that you have not continued to try and bring the arm of the government down onto a small business in our community and to allow for freedom to be able to be um, the seat of it to be set here, right here in northern Michigan. And I think that we can be an example for the rest of the state and the rest of the country of what can happen when we set aside political differences and come together towards each other's rights and as citizens of this country and not Democrats and Republicans. So I'm very proud to see that you guys are not continuing this, um, this assault on the civil liberties of, uh, the restaurant here in northern Michigan. I, uh, very, very proud that this is being done here in northern Michigan. So thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the Board of Health? You can again? Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you. I had first heard about the four-four vote, uh, to appeal last week. Um, grateful for my two commissioners from Atsigo County for, uh, voting against that. Ironically, you all knew about that decision before my attorney and I actually did. We found out later on that day, Tuesday, when it came in the mail. Um, so kudos to you guys. You actually knew before I did anything that happened. Um, many of you may not know, but I do retain the right to appeal. Um, after sitting here and watching the turn of everybody here from going from a four-four tie to deciding not to appeal this case at all. Thank you. I, I appreciate that very, very much. And I want to just reiterate what I said earlier, that, you know, none of this is personal. None of this is an attack on Dan Threl or Lisa Peacock, his predecessor. Um, you know, I have a lot of respect for what you guys do, and usually I only see you folks twice a year with Holly. Having said that, I am not satisfied with Judge Hunter's ruling. I will be appealing. I am not satisfied with 2451 being constitutional. While it sits there and I do have a circuit court remedy, it is not good enough. The standards that were spoken of earlier, the guardrails, 42451 are virtually non-existent. Now, having said that, I want to reiterate the last thing, and many, many people in here know me well enough. This is a true statement. I do not want to spend any more of my taxpayer money, let alone anybody else's taxpayer dollars, here defending this nonsense. But A, I didn't start it, but B, I mean to finish it. So I will be appealing, and I want to reiterate, I don't want to spend any more taxpayer dollars. But let me end with this. The last four years, you all have been paying for this anyway. The Attorney General's Office, all of those folks, we pay for that. It's already being paid for by the taxpayer. You know what? We're going to go to the Court of Appeals. We're going to stand on in recertified questions. We're going to stand on Judge Hunter's rulings, and we're going to stand on Supreme Court rulings, federal court cases. And we're going to make sure that as the health director stated so brilliantly, the legislature needs to go back and define what an epidemic is and rewrite the rules for some proper guidelines. And kudos to you for, for acknowledging that and knowing that. Because that's exactly what the problem is here and why we brought this action to begin with. So thank you for overturning and not trying to spend more of the taxpayer dollars. I appreciate that. And not trying to continue to come after me. But the state and this health department has been coming after me, put a cease and desist on my business the day before Thanksgiving. One of the biggest bar nights of the year. Like I said, I didn't start it, but I mean to finish it.
Okay, that's your three minutes, sir. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board of Health? Mr. Cross? I have a gavel, but I'm not a judge and we're not having an argument. But go ahead, Mr. Cross.
Well, obviously in light of that comment, I figured it's probably a, probably a good idea that I, I have a few more words. So obviously, if we are going to appeal, maybe you might want to reconsider that motion. You don't have to do it here today. That kind of gives us some time. So, you know, that's, I'm, I'm going to withhold comment on, on the merits. I, I'm happy to have another stab at it in the Court of Appeals. So, uh, but need some authorization from you. I don't want to get stuck in that position where we do get defaulted. So whether you want to do it here today or, or some other day, I need some guidance on what I can do.
I think we meet again the first Tuesday of June, and that gives us some time. Uh, we don't have to schedule yet another special meeting. Uh, you'll, if, uh, Mr. Murphy does appeal, then you'll be started with the appropriate paperwork, and then we can put that on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Would anyone else like to address the Board of Health? Yes, sir. Again, please state your name, sir. I'll give you three minutes and a 30-second warning.
Uh, Joe Murphy, only a distant clan relationship to Eaton. We've never met. Emmett County. Uh, as a taxpayer, I'm interested since part of what this health department does has been declared as constitutional, and we're not appealing it. How does that affect the work of the health department? What does it deny them the ability to do? Now, that's something is not going to be answered today, uh, but perhaps this board should know how that's going to affect the work of the health department that you oversee.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address the Board of Health? Okay. All right, Mr. Murphy, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board of Health? Hearing none, public comment is now closed, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So.
I'll second. Moved by Mr. Chamberlain, seconded by Mr. Mapes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You had your chance.